Okay. I don't know who this is. One second as this person joins. It's a picture in the picture in the picture. Alright, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the May 5th Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. I ask everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic. In one nation, under God.
We're divisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, please be seated. Legend mine. As everybody had a chance to review the April 21st minutes as provided.
Yes.
Someone want to offer a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Tommy D., second. Rich, any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Sandy, I did speak to our secretary and there was an issue with the computer. That notes that the last meeting minutes were taken on, so the IT guy is going to retrieve them for her and we'll have them hopefully soon.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, first item on the regular agenda this evening. Hartland slash Hudson Point ARB. Review and discuss ARB application for proposed addition to an existing single-family dwelling. Said property is located nine Hudson Point and is known in the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps. Section 225 Block 1 Lot 2. Just a general comment before we discuss any of the applications tonight. There was some correspondence that was received early, late last week, early this week in regard to some applications tonight. It was well past the due date, so this board has not had a chance to review that. Nor have any of the consultants will be able to speak to any of that newer correspondence that has been received. With that said. Mr. Lockman.
Hi, good evening, everybody.
Oh, sorry. How are you, Larry?
Fine.
Alright, you want to give us the thousand-foot view?
Yeah, so basically, a client of mine is doing, he wants to do an addition. And this area is part of the Ridge Preservation Area, which means every addition has to be approved by the ARB. And we're seeking approval for an addition. As far as the design of the addition, we tried to incorporate. It shouldn't be too obvious. It should fit in with existing house as well as the houses around it. It's a narrow, long addition, which means it's from the front, it's just about around 25 feet if you remember well. And it goes towards the right side of the house, towards the back. It's from the front, it's only one story. It has some mezzanine space in the middle of the roof where it's higher. But with, in order, the same in its near the crouch, if you take a look at the 3D. It's same level as that, as that roof and follows that line in order to kind of fit in with the existing house. As far as materials, it's existing, so we're following the existing material. It's like a brown looking color, which I think is preferred in that area. Same goes with the stone. So we're just going to follow that existing and just put the same material on the new ones. As far as the windows, obviously, it's going to be the non-glare because of the same, the existing does not have glare. We're going to use everything the same, same trim, same everything. And that's basically it, so.
Alright, Mr. Lockman, you want to go with your comments and then we'll go to the board. You're muted.
Hi, Jonathan Lockman from NPV Village Planner. You should have my memorandum dated April the 30th. As far as Ridge Preservation goes. The board needs to determine if this addition blends into the hillside to the maximum practical extent. We see that they're proposing a natural clay color. Which I believe is part of, is would qualify under the palette of natural colors. They're proposing Harvard slate for the roof. The applicant already mentioned that the proposed glass will not be reflective, but a note to that effect should be included on any, you know, recent mits of drawings. So that that's on the record. Also, in terms of the site. The applicant should confirm that no vegetation clearing or removal of any trees greater than eight inches is included as part of those standards. Architectural review. The board needs to review the homes in the vicinity and it, this subject's compatibility. And when you're doing additions on an existing home, typically what qualifies is photographs of the surrounding homes to show the, whether they're, whether the, the subject is fitting in and/or whether it's excessively similar or not, or excessively dissimilar. It needs to be shown as fitting in. All requirements. The application should be updated to indicate that the property is in the CCDOD, the Cluster Conservation Cluster Overlay District. As well as RONA. We need information to show the, the square footage of the existing dwelling. And we would need to know what the proposed, the existing lot coverage is. And that the proposed lot coverage will be met with the addition. It looks like the yard requirements are being met. And that the lot width is okay as the approved lot in WP3 isn't being changed. The building height should be labeled on the, on the, on the, on the plans. There's a 35-foot requirement. It doesn't seem to be a problem, but it should be clearly labeled. On the projected water and sewer demand form. It indicated zero increase in water and sewer usage. But we want to ask the applicant to explain a little bit more about what's going to go on in the addition. There's a great room, 44 by 30 feet, approximately 1300 square feet. With two gallery sitting areas above. It has two bathrooms, a warming kitchen. And it, and it seems like to be designed for a large number of users and we're wondering whether it's really the case that water and sewer usage will, will remain constant after this addition. And also, we would defer to the building inspector that with a seating area for 26 people. And the get, and the seating galleries, if there's going to be assembly of more than 50 people. There would need to be some construction features for assembly at, at this, at this site. Because there's a different occupancy category if, if, if that is the case. And in terms of seeker, we're recommending that this is a type 2 use. As it's an addition to a single-family home on an approved lot. And we're not aware of anything that would cause us to need a GML review. And that is my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Jonathan from Planning Board members? No? Rick, do you have anything?
Well, a few things. One, I don't think that we can determine whether or not it's a type 2 action or not until we get more specifics with respect to the intended purpose of this addition. It certainly doesn't seem like your typical addition. And if in fact it's intended for some other use, it may need to be approved for that use and it also may take it out of the type 2 category.
I agree, Rick. I would only hold that keep to the type 2 if it really were just a single-family use.
Correct. And there is, I agree with Jonathan, there's no GML 239 required. Other than that, it's your typical ARB review standards that you're well familiar with.
Okay, thank you very much, Rick. Sorry, I'm trying to pull something up on my screen. Larry, you want to speak to the intended use?
Right. I saw the comments regarding the size of the room and the galleries. I did reconfirm, I, I did reconfirm with the, with the client, the tenant use. He confirmed with me that this is, it's going to be used for just his family. Basically, he has a large family and he went into detail, they, where they live around him. And they go a lot, which means he has already plenty of grandchildren and things like that. I asked him again, I told him that the board has a concern about the size. And he reconfirmed to me that it's going to be only a super-family residential use. So it's all I can add on that. I saw the concerns that is huge in size. Particularly for the typical home around it. I mean, for me, believe it or not, I come from a family of 12. My father has, would say 50 square feet less than a room. And he has over probably 100, I think around 120 grandchildren. So for me, it's not so unobvious, but for a lot of people, I mean, something like that would look. And I can understand the concern, but the most I was able to, I was referring them, I showed him the comments, showed him all the concerns. And he reaffirmed to me that that's, it's not going to be the case. It's not going to be used other than the simple five residential.
I have, this, I presume this is a door? Larry, you see my, is this a door? What is the door for? I mean, I know what a door is for. Sorry. Is this, is this for access into that particular room or?
Yeah, that, that leads, it creates the kind of a mother entry, as of now, this person only has a front entry. And there's a door, there was a door to the garage over there, which he was able, which this addition kind of blocks. So that kind of gives him the mother entry that he always wanted. He used to have a door right into the garage from the side, which wasn't really a mother entry, but was a garage entry. So that compensates for that entry.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other comments, questions, or concerns for members of the board?
Yeah, I'm just a little curious. Above the garage. The roof is, is that a, is that a sucker roof?
Yeah.
Yes?
Correct. That, that's part of the existing.
That's what?
That's part of the existing.
Okay.
He has a sucker roof in the garage. So it kind of can open.
Right.
The addition only starts from there, the right side.
Okay, so is that, that's going to stay? That roof is going to stay like that?
Right.
Any other questions, Sandy?
So the whole, the whole addition is 2248 square feet?
The whole addition is 22. Let me, let me just, let me just make sure.
On, on sheet 1A102, it talks about 3,000, because it includes the basement, the first floor, and the second floor.
I mean, when you calculate the square, the footprint is around 2248. But if you calculate that mezzanine, the little mezzanine, and the other is, it's, it is as it says in the floor plan, the total square footage.
How is a mezzanine a typical family, single-family use?
This guy already has a mezzanine. I don't know if I show it in the plan, I'm just curious for sure. He already has a mezzanine as part of his study. He likes that, actually, that only one, it's like a walkway, alleyway, three ways around. Two, three ways, and then has open to a big window as part of his study. I mean, it's a small room, you kind of packed it in because that, that's how he likes it. So the, so this one is kind of, because it has an angled ceiling. You put in a mezzanine in the, it kind of in the angle of the ceiling, you know? Typical, typical, typical would have been a bonus room, you know? So he felt he was going to use out that space and put in a mezzanine. Oh, oh, you see that? You see it? The study on the left side has a mezzanine also three ways.
Right, so this is what you're talking about, Larry? This is what you're considering the mezzanine?
That's, yeah, so this is the open space. You kind of walk around and look into the open space. And this is not updated. This also has like a small staircase, like a spiral staircase. That's already existing. Not this one, that's part of the new one. But it's part of the existing home. So it kind of, I understand that feeling that you, that it is, it's nice, has railing, it's a you know, I mean, and that, this is definitely for private, it's a small room, so. I mean, I can understand that. I can also understand the part where you have, people feel if you have that little attic, that you have that attic space in between, you kind of want to use it. So if you take a look at that little space, like in the part of that space, where you kind of have enough headroom, kind of put in space for that.
Okay. Sandy, any other?
Well, I was just looking at the amount of windows on this addition as well, on the side and then on the back. I think it's A202. Sheet A202?
Yeah.
The right one, if you see A202, the right one has existed. A202, the right, those large windows.
Okay.
You'll see link, that's existing. Not on the, on the bottom, on the bottom.
Okay.
The bottom, that's, that's already, that, that one is already existing. It's part of his, the, I said that the three-sided gallery. That looks out of this, the, from the gallery, you can look straight out in this window. He has the woods in back, so he kind of you can obviously see that this person kind of likes a lot of window and I don't blame him. I live, I'm going to live about four houses down and I, I'm also facing the same wooded area and I also put a lot of windows. And I could only understand that.
So this is, this is the house, this is going to be the rear.
Yeah.
Right, but the, the ones on the, the ones on the back, I agree, are similar as far as the openness. But the ones on the side, on that, that top, yeah. So that's going to be facing. Can you go back to that aerial view again? That's going to be facing this house right here.
Correct. The, the one on the side, that is correct.
Yeah. So I mean, it just, it's, those window, I mean, they're probably going to be, it's going to be very bright. But.
Correct.
Hopefully they remember to put a robe on in the morning.
And then, and then that driveway from that, the first picture, that driveway is going to be it almost looks like it's going to go all the way across the addition?
No, the right, the driver is going to state exactly the way it is. Let me take a look at the site plan. It was another tent.
Yeah, because on the, the 3D rendering that was submitted, it, it looks like it's asphalt.
Correct. I mean, the 3D rendering is basically an actual photo, just added that that addition, the kind of, it looks like that driver is going to go across because it's the way it has a hill going up.
Right.
But the reality is not going to, it's, it's not the reality like that. That driveway is the actual driveway it is right now and we just added the addition to it. So we're not, I don't think, I'm taking a look at the site plan. I don't think we actually proposed any change for the driveway.
Any else, Sandy?
I'm just.
I'm looking at it right now. There's no, there's no proposed, driver is not going to change.
Okay. Rick, this is more for you. I noticed on a lot of these WP3 applications for the address. And I know that a lot of them have a mailing address up Monroe, but under the, the property address, it's, they're, they're all coming in as Monroe.
With their zip code too.
Right, should that say Woodbury or Central Valley or?
I don't know what their post office box is. Are you talking about on the plans, it says one thing and you think that they're?
Some of the other applications on the plans, it does say Monroe, but on here, on the application to appear before the planning board?
I can, I would guess that it's, it's the zip code issue. I know that our office says Suffolk, New York on our mailing address, but it's not located in Suffolk. We're in, we're in the Village of Armont. And there are different, zip code boundaries are different than village boundaries, but I, I can check into that for you, what the zip code. Whether the WP3 is in the zip code for Monroe or not.
Well, I know, what I was told was that some of the mailing addresses, because I guess Central Valley couldn't handle the, the mail. That some of the mailing addresses are Monroe, but it's clearly in the town of Woodbury and the hamlet of Central Valley, so that's why. I mean, if somebody looks at this, it looks like it, it's Monroe. It even says project address under the, under the projected water and sewer demand. It says project address, nine Hudson Point, Monroe, New York, 10950. But if you look up that SBL, it says Woodbury.
Well, that's, they're both true. I, I would believe that they're, it's both true. It is located in the village. And the tax map lot is located in the village, but for the purposes of the United States mail. It appears to be in, in, in Monroe and that, that is a common occurrence. I can check into it for you. If I find out that this area is correctly considered by the postal service as the, as, as a Monroe delivery area and that's a, that's a proper address. Then it really, there's not too much the planning board could do about that.
It is correct that there are actually, there's two different aspects. One is political boundaries and the other is post office boundaries. And there's really no such thing as a hamlet either. What we typically think of as hamlets, which is not any defined jurisdictional boundary. It's really, it's just a post office boundary. And that's all it means. I live in the town of Hamptonburg, but my mail comes to Campbell Hall, New York, which is just a name of a post office. So here, if, it depends upon what's being asked. If they ask for an address and their address is properly Monroe, and I don't know if that's true, but if it is properly Monroe, then the application is correct that way.
Okay.
If you ask for the, the, the village or town that it's in, or you should be asking what village it's in, and it, they should say Woodbury. They wouldn't say Monroe at that point. So it really depends upon what question is being asked. But if they ask for an address, they, I think it's appropriate for, the only address they have is one that they get their mail at.
If I can add, again, exactly, it's a common thing. The mail is in Monroe. It has the 10950 zip code and it's in Monroe. So typically, what I do in a case like this, I don't know if that's the right way. On a plan, I would, I would usually put the municipality who's going to review it. So if you were to take a look at my plans, it says Woodbury or Central Valley or whatever. So, and, so that would be the municipality who's going to review it. But any other place would you typically put the right address? Because somebody is going to look at that and going to want to send a comment or anything, going to look at that and if you're going to write Woodbury, the mail is never going to arrive.
If you like, I can shit, if you allow, if I were to be allowed to share my screen, I can display a zip code map if that, if that's of interest.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that, because I know on some of them it goes back and forth and on other ones it just says Monroe, so I just wanted some, to find out if there's any continuity between. You know?
Well, I can tell you that I'm looking at a zip code map, map right now and there's no continuity between the zip codes and the village boundaries or town boundaries.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's common out on like Long Island, you could have, like, my fire department covered East Meadow, Westbury, Levittown, but we were the East Meadow Fire Department. It's just the way they, they drew the lines back then, it's.
That was even me, but I was growing up. I mean, my mailing address was Pearl River. Because Ramapo didn't have a post office, but we were East Ramapo. Even when we came of a village, we were Chesa Ridge, but it was still Pearl River Post Office.
Okay.
Alright, sorry, any other questions, Sandy?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, Tommy?
No, not right now. Actually, I do got one and I'm not sure it really pertains to this. Right now, it's applying as residential use. What's to say? I don't even know if this falls under the planning board jurisdiction. You know, a year from now, they want to change that use to something else. Does that fall to us, building inspector, building department? Do you understand what I'm going with that?
It depends on what they wanted to change it to. If it, you know, it becomes like a special use permit or something like that, it would come to the planning board and review. If it was.
So it gets approved on their residential use, but then they just want to change it to a special use permit.
Then they're back before the planning board.
They're back before the planning board and they would have to conform to whatever that special use would be.
Alright.
Any else, Tommy?
Nope.
Rich?
Sound good.
Rob?
I'd like to see the square footage of the houses that are nearby it, off to the sides and across the street and make a comparison to the size that this unit's going to be with the addition.
I think, yeah, I think you've done that once before for us. I think it was your house, Larry.
So yeah, I'll, I'll put the existing, the new, kind of compared of what's going with the houses around it. To see as far as from footage wise, I did show, as far as footage wise, if it fits in the, in the area, correct?
Yeah, actually, I have a much simpler answer. With the aerial view of Google Maps, can you just draw the addition? Or what it would look like attached to the house? Just like an outline from the top down, just so we get an idea?
Correct, okay. I can do that. I basically overlay, overlay, if you take a look at the site plan. Has the existing house, then it has the proposed addition. I can overlay that on that top of Google Images.
Even better. I was looking for a couple of red lines and, but that works still. Alright, any other questions from the board?
But again, I would also, as it was earlier pointed out, you wanted, you wanted the square footage of the existing as well on the plans, correct?
Yes.
And you still want that comparison as well?
Yeah, the same thing that we did for the previous house you had in front of us. You remember that little presentation you put together?
Yeah, not a problem.
Okay. Um, alright. You think you can get that all together in the next couple of weeks and we could potentially schedule a public hearing for June 2nd?
Yes. June 2nd, that is the two, two meetings.
You would have to have everything done by the 19th, right?
Yeah. Definitely.
Am I getting my dates right, Rick? I think I got my dates right. Natalie shaking her head. Okay. Alright, so with that said, I'll offer a motion to schedule a public hearing for June 2nd?
I could.
I heard a second. Who'd that come from? Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright, Larry, so you're good with what you need to get to us by the 19th?
Definitely. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Alright, you're welcome, sir. Have a good night.
Chris, one other thing, Chris?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Since the board is satisfied that it's a single-family use and I can certainly put a condition in there to that extent. That you should probably recognize for the record that this is a type 2 action seeker.
I'll make the motion to type 2 action on the seeker. Any seconds? Anybody? Rich, okay, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. I think we got everything now, right? Okay, good. All right. Thank you. One second. All right. Next item on the agenda, Fieldman, Southfield Falls ARB, review and discuss ARB application for proposed addition to an existing single family dwelling. Said properties located 77 Southfield Falls, and it's known as the Village of Woodbury, tax map section 225, block four, block two.
Hi, hello.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Man, how are you?
Good. Same thing, uh, that we just did with Larry. You want to give the thousand foot view of what's going on and then we'll go from there?
Yes, um, my customer is, um, I present Mr. Lustigman. And, uh, he wanna, he wanna add the, on one side of the house, we wanna add the soccer room. You can see it in the, at the back of the house, the left side. And also you want to change the location of the kitchen. You wanna, you wanna make from the garage. You want to make a nice big kitchen. And then you want to add the kitchen, uh, new garage to the, um, on, on the side, on the right side of the new kitchen, which is now the existing garage.
I beat myself with the prints. All right. Jonathan, you want to go with your report, please?
Uh, sure. Uh, Jonathan Lockman, village planner from Nelson Pope Vores. Uh, we have a memorandum dated April 30th. We had noted that on the initial submission, uh, there, the, it was missing floor plans for the second level. So he'd asked for that. The projected water and sewer demand, uh, said that there was no adding of bedrooms. But we'd like to see, when, once we see the floor plans for, for, for all of the levels, um, uh, we can confirm about the, the issue of are there any bedrooms being added? I do note that, uh, Mr. Feldman, I think it was perhaps yesterday or today, sent some more drawings, but we haven't had a chance to review them, of course. Uh, as the chairman said earlier, um, on, in terms of the bulk requirements, it should be noted on the application that it's in this conservation cluster overlay as well as R1A. Uh, we'd like to see the square footage of the existing dwelling, the square footage of the additions and, um, lot coverage. Uh, you're not supposed to exceed 35% with impervious surfaces. The, the, uh, bulk, the setbacks, uh, front yard, side yard, rear yard appear to be met. Uh, and the building height should be labeled on sheets A5 and A6. Uh, not to, and it shouldn't exceed 35 feet. I don't believe it does, but that should be properly labeled. Uh, on ridge preservation, um, the board needs to determine if the addition blends into the hillside to the maximum extent uh, possible. Uh, there's a, the color proposed for the vinyl siding is classic cream. It looks, you know, it looks a little bit brighter than some of the other, uh, houses around, but the planning board should decide whether this classic cream, uh, meets the standard of a natural color.
Uh, I, um, sorry.
I'll, I'll, I'll just keep, yeah, I'm, I'm almost done. We, we can have the back and forth after I finish. The, uh, the barkwood shingles are proposed. That does appear to meet the natural color, uh, standard. The, um, glass, uh, you need to confirm that it's not going to be reflective and also confirm that there's no vegetation clearing or removal of eight inch or greater trees. Uh, and it doesn't look like there's going to be substantial, uh, clearing around this existing home. The architectural review, uh, it is an addition to an existing home. Given the size of these additions, I don't know if the board wants the same kind of analysis for the last applicant. But at a minimum, I recommend that photographs of the surrounding homes be provided so that it could, you can make your determination that the additions and changes to this house are, are in keeping with the houses, uh, surrounding it. Uh, once again, we find this to be a type two action. If all that's happening is in addition to a single family, a home or two additions to a single family home on a, on an approved lot that would qualify as type two, and we're not aware of any reason that this would require a GML review to the county. And that is my report.
Mr. Feldman, I think you had a comment with John, one of Jonathan's memo comments, comment for the comment.
Just one comment, every, everything is like Jonathan said, I'm like, like Nelson Pope, um, is, um, I'm sad, so. It is, um, like Nelson Pope provided, just the, the second floor, I also provided on the plan I sent and I bring to the office today. And I tried the colors, the coloring should match, um, the most possible to the existing, to the existing colors, also the shingles. I'm, I tried to match to the existing shingles. So I, I don't think it will be very obvious, the whole extension. So the rendering is a little bit more bright, brighter than the existing, but I tried very much to match the, the existing house.
Is, is it vinyl siding already, this? Mr. Feldman?
It's vinyl siding. It's vinyl siding. The render, the render is a little, is a little bit more bright than the, but than the actual picture. But I want to match, I want to match all the existing, also the shadows, everything I want to match the existing. So it should not be, it should not be, uh, uh, obvious, very obvious, the whole extension. And, uh, the rest, um, I think is very clear.
Okay. Very good. And would you be able to do the same thing before your public hearing? Would you be able to either simply just draw on the aerial view where the additions will come out on the house? Or overlay? Either way, it's fine. So from, looking from the top down, just so the planning board can see, you know, how far the additions come out uh, on the side and on the back, just to get a, an idea of how close they'll be to the neighbors.
So, so it means that you need, that, that you want to provide, um, more renderings, more 3D renderings of all around the house?
No, no, no. Just if, see the aerial view I have up now?
Oh.
On, on my screen?
Okay, let me show it. Um, we'll have, we'll have a garage on this side. And we'll have a soccer room on that place, on this corner.
Yeah, if you could just draw the, it, you, you can simply just take this image and draw the additions onto it, just so we have an idea from top down of how far it's going to come out. You don't have to get fancy. We don't need 3D renderings or anything. I don't think, just an idea, uh, just an idea of how far it's going to come out from the house.
You need it now? You're near, you're near the second?
No, 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 before.
No, no, no.
Before the public hearing.
Uh huh. Okay.
And then if you could also just photograph the houses on either side and across the street, so we can, you know, for the record, show that this, uh, you, the house you're working on with its addition, uh, really fits with the others in the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
Just some photographs of the houses around will, will, would be great. Thank you.
Okay, no, thank you.
And if you, if, if you have, it sounds like you've already started responding to the memorandum, which is terrific. Uh, but if you have any questions, you can always call outside of the meeting.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you so much.
Sandy, questions?
What?
You have questions, Sandy?
Well, I mean, I, I can, I can see the plans, but I, when he said that, did we want renderings from all the way around? I would like to see a rendering of the back just to, you know, with the, what it's proposed to look like because of the, the additions that are going on the back.
Okay. So a 3D rendering of the back?
Yeah.
Okay. Any else? Questions, concerns? Sandy?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
I'm just going, I'm just going in, tie order.
Okay. I'm sorry. I thought that, yeah, no, I'm, I'm good right now.
Tommy?
No, I'm good on this one.
Rich?
The roof is all the same color, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Rob?
I think that covers pretty much everything that we need to know. You know, to be looking to.
Okay. Rick?
The only thing is, it certainly is that you should make this a type two action on the seeker. The only thing I think that should be added to make it easier for the building inspector to enforce your intentions is to put in the resolution of approval, a condition that the new vinyl siding is to match and be no brighter than the existing beige or cream vinyl siding. And the new roof shall match the existing colored shingles.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Okay. On the plans, on the plans, you can see the note, it's, it's called, it's, I want to match all the colors. But I will provide it for the render too, and I will provide you the render for the, for the back also, and I will make you the Google sketch what you asked me for. So I hope you will be happy next time.
Yep. All right. So you, would you be able to get that by the 19th?
Yes, probably, probably yes.
Okay. Well, it's either yes or no, because it's probably that I can't schedule a public.
Yes, yes, yes.
Um, all right. Any other questions or concerns or, uh, thoughts from the planning board? Or any other information? No? Okay. Um, I'll offer a motion to schedule a public hearing for June 2nd?
Second date.
Second by Robert. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I'll also make a motion to type this as a type two action on the seeker.
Second.
Uh, second by Sandy. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So make sure you get everything to the building department by the 19th, and then we'll see you on the second.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next item on the agenda, Central Valley Property Management Review and Discuss Letter Requesting That The Previously Approved Site Plan and Special Permit Be amended to Include Personal Service. Said Properties Located In 252 Through 260 Route 32 In Central Valley And Is Known In The Village Of Woodbury Tax Map Section 230 Block 7. Um, block seven, lot 17, 18 and 19. Who's here for Central Valley? No, I thought I saw Steve Esposito join.
Something must have happened to him technologically.
I see a Steve, but I don't know if that's Steve Esposito. Usually he signs in with his first and last name. Oh, there he is. You're muted.
That's me.
Okay, there you go.
It's me.
All right. What's going on, Steve?
But am I up? Cause I hate to. Uh, yeah, so we're, this is a Central Valley, uh, property management. Um, everybody's aware of the project. Uh, as you know, the building is complete, uh, and I start, they're starting to occupy the building. And, uh, one of the things that we're, what we're requesting tonight is to include uh, personal service as a permitted use in the scheduled uses. Uh, as you know, personal service, uh, the bulk requirements and land area or lot area is consistent with retail and office. But the original approval had 7,100 square feet of retail and office with the balance being designated for restaurants. And we think our request is pretty, pretty consistent with the purpose of the, of the hamlet zone, uh, which is to provide, you know, retail and services, uh, to, to, uh, commercial centers. Uh, also consistent with the comprehensive plan. And, um, we've gone through this once before. If you recall in 2019, uh, the original approval for the bank building, which is part of this, uh, approval, uh, which is 2,400 square feet, uh, was for retail. Uh, we then had a client, an end user that wanted to come in, that was Gary, designated them as a personal service. Uh, we went through the review and the reanalysis, parking with personal service. And, uh, the, the numbers on it from our original, uh, park, parking or shared parking analysis didn't change based on the change in use. Uh, and we're here tonight, uh, to ask the board to allow us to amend the map, uh, to have a personal service as a permitted use, uh, for this project. Uh, cause we think that that's something that's, that's key for us to, for a successful project. Uh, right now he has somebody interested in a barber shop about a thousand square feet. Uh, and that's really why we're here tonight to, uh, see if we amend the plan and pursue this end user.
Natalie, you're up.
Good evening, everybody. So as Steve noted, um, the impact of an additional personal service use really doesn't affect, um, the bulk requirements or the land area or even necessarily the parking spaces that should be provided. Um, our memo noted that, uh, you may consider whether or not a revised shared parking analysis would be necessary. Um, I'm not sure, based on the last one that was submitted, if the, um, personal service use as sort of the childcare, um, activity center would be the same as a barber shop. Um, but if you would like to see that, that's something that, um, perhaps Mazer could provide some input on, uh, prior to your next meeting or whenever you would consider this application again. Uh, the other thing that would change, uh, is water and sewer usage and the projected demand for the same. Um, certainly a barber shop would use more than a retail office space. So if that's something that you'd like the applicant to provide, uh, to consider this request, uh, again, we think that's a, that's one difference that would be, um, applicable here. Um, otherwise we recommend you consider any other information, uh, that you would need to make a decision on the application. Um, doesn't appear that there would be any modifications to ARB, but Steve could confirm. Um, and then he already advised that the potential tenant is a barber shop. Um, and obviously I, I think that the hours of operation would be, you know, typical of a barber shop, but you might want them to confirm that as well. That's all.
Thank you, Natalie. Anybody have any questions for Natalie? I do have concerns with the shared parking because typically people go Saturdays and Sundays to get their haircut. Um, I, if I remember, when I pulled the application for the bounce house that was trying to go into, um, the, the bank next door, that's almost, uh, one of the peak times that they are predicting that they would be using the parking lot. Um, and to be quite honest with you, the shared parking analysis that was given in, to the board to review, doesn't actually match the parking spots that are being used. There are anywhere between 11 and 15 cars in that lot, any given day. And apparently the apartments are the only thing that are rented. So we're already using more spots than what's in the shared parking analysis. So that is definitely one thing I'm going to want to see again, because I don't think, it's, I think, a couple of us had had this, uh, probably had this question before. And I still stand by my words. I don't think it's right. I think the parking is not adequate. And I will already start to see it when not a single commercial establishment is in there. I'll be honest with you, I've already called the building inspector twice because there have been cars that have been in there with no plates, no registration. So I don't know what's going on, but something's not right. So shared parking analysis will definitely need to be updated for this. Questions from the rest of the board for Natalie?
Natalie, um, what other type of personal services could possibly be put into these, uh, units? What, is there a, a list of, uh, personal services like, uh, physical therapist or, uh, a gym type of situation?
Yeah, um, our memo actually lists some that are outlined in the code, um, under that definition. So the code, it defines a personal service as an establishment primarily engaged in providing services involving the specialized care of a person or a person's apparel, including, but not limited to a beauty shop, a nail salon, a barber shop, a tailor shop or exercise, martial arts or dance studio. So those are some other examples of a personal service use.
And when the, um, language like that is used in a code, um, by way of example, uh, what that means is that it could be any other similar use that fits into that, those types of categories listed. So it wouldn't be every personal use, but. So it wouldn't be every personal use, but it would be ones that are consistent with those listed, which are quite a number. Not only of those listed, but what you can imagine that are similar to that. Which is, leads, I'll just weigh in for a second on this, to my question is that, you know, it's noted as being a barber shop, but unless the applicant is going to restrict it to a barber shop, it's almost meaningless that it's a barber shop, you should be considering the impacts of other personal service uses if it's being approved as simply a personal service use.
Yeah, the, the, I think what would clear this up, in, in my memorandum, I asked that Steve submit um, the site plan with a new bulk table, so he could see exactly the wording in the bulk table. But I do believe he, his intention would be to put personal service as well as retail and office under the six, 7,161 square foot allotment. Um, and I don't believe he would intend to put down a specific uh, personal service.
Well, wouldn't a barber shop, like X amount of chairs in the barber shop dictate, like what Chris was going back to, how many spots? You know, when you say specific, no?
No.
It goes by the square feet. The square, the square footage requirement for parking at a retail, for parking at an office, and for parking at a personal service are identical. So, um, i- i- if Mr. Gerber's concern is borne out by the research that there's not enough parking, uh, on an intellectual basis, it shouldn't be, if there is enough parking, there isn't enough parking, but the, these different uses by code are all classified as requiring the same amount of parking. But with a sharing analysis, you're supposed to be looking at what use gets used when.
Right.
And that's the, that's really the, 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 the live issue here is in some ways, a barber shop might work out in that they tend to open at 7:30 in the morning, and nobody else is open then, that's when I get my haircut, but as much as hair as I have. But the, the, um, on the other hand, what Chris brought up was Saturdays and Sundays are busy times for these type of shops. But personal services, you don't know it's going to be a barber shop, it could be a dry cleaner. And a dry cleaner may have slightly different.
Definitely different parking than a barber shop, sure.
Yeah, so.
What I think, I know Natalie's dying to jump in, but, but, but I think in a, in a sort of a larger context is that if you're going to commit, permit personal service uses, you should really kind of consider what the maximum personal service use might be, um, and analyze the, the parking that's necessary for that and the potential overlap. And if it's less than that, that's fine. But if you, if you don't do it, thinking about the maximum impact of all whatever personal service use might be in there, then I think that's when you're going to be coming up short potentially.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta look at, you gotta look at things in the COVID world right now. With, you know, I go to get my hair, my haircut at the barber, you can't wait in the side anymore, everybody's waiting in their cars in the parking lot to get called in. Kids go to a dance studio, you got 15 kids in a class, you got 15 parents sitting in the parking lot, waiting for the kid to get out of dance studio. They're not allowed to go in anymore. Uh, so the, the things have changed, and I, I'm, like I said, I'm extremely concerned having the application that came before us last year for the bounce house, who's going to be primarily a weekend-driven uh, service, at least that's what she had stated. And then this potential use of barber shop, which is, as I know, people get their haircut five, seven days a week, but you know, most people still work Monday through Friday, so they're either there in the evenings or on Saturdays and Sundays, so to me, you know, you got 10 chairs in the barber shop, you got, I think she was 20 something in the uh, the bounce place next door, and then 25, that's close, not bad for memory.
Not bad at all.
And then if they put a beauty shop next door to the barber shop.
And then you, yeah, but then you go through that lot, and there's already 11 to 15 cars there, no matter what time of day it is. And they're not parked in the resident spot, they're just parked throughout, randomly throughout the lot. So I think, what is it, 70 something spaces, 72, 77 spaces, something there? Uh, I know we built out the bank parking there. I mean, so you're 20, 30, 45, you, you get a, like you said, you get a nail salon or a beauty salon that goes in next with, you know, another 10 people to get their nails and fingers done.
Employees.
And employees. You're already, you're potentially in a full lot already.
Yeah, you're full lot with two stores and the bounce house.
Well, the other thing is that we put a, a specific condition on the bank building for personal service business, um, the hours of operation, 10 a.m. to 6 p.m.
On the weekends, right?
No.
27 days a week.
That was just flat out, 10 a.m. to 6 p.m.
If I may, um, I think it would be appropriate to ask the applicant, to Rick's point, uh, in order to demonstrate sort of the worst case scenario, have that revised shared parking analysis for a barber shop and say a martial arts or a some, something like a use like that, where there would be parents dropping off, and then you could see sort of the difference and, and what that would be. And then certainly with the water and sewer projections, um, I know that that hasn't really been discussed too much here, but a barber shop or a hair salon would more likely be the worst case scenario as far as that goes, so we would like to see that. Um, and then certainly, Steve has already offered that 1,000 square feet would be reserved for this personal service use. That could also be maybe part of your action and, and limiting that, so when you say, you know, another barber shop would come in, then they would have to come back perhaps for more area, I'm not sure, Rick, would you agree?
Yes. Yeah, I think, I think it's actually important to have a limit um, when you are coming in, and this is always the problem that people have of coming in for a project for tenants, and they don't know who the tenants are, because then it's hard for the planning board to assess the impact, including parking and other issues, water, sewer, because there's such varied amounts. So it's really the applicant that drives this, if they're want as much flexibility as possible, you basically have to say, well, we're going to have to assume the worst case scenario, that the highest water sewer users are going to occupy all of the space. Um, and the worst parking is going to also occupy the worst space. To, um, sort of tamp that down and be more realistic, it makes a lot of sense to put square footage restrictions on it, because that way it's a lot easier to try to now analyze the different impacts of the different uses.
So the, the restriction would be, the project overall would only be allowed to have 1,000 square feet of personal service space?
That's what I understand.
But, I mean, but, you know, you know as well as I do, we could just.
That's actually not our, that's not our request. Our request is to add personal service as a permitted use.
Well, then I guess you would have to approve for worst case scenario for the entire building being personal service then, right?
Well, it was for seven, to be really specific, it was for about 7,000 square feet.
7,100 square feet.
7,161 square feet is now currently reserved for retail slash office. And the request was to, that 7,161 could be retail slash office slash personal services. And that.
You have to assume the worst case.
So the worst case, I suppose, if you think a barber shop is the worst case for water, then the worst case would be that all 7,161 square feet could be a barber shop. Or, as Rick suggests, you could say that there could be 7,161 square feet could be, you know, 3,000 personal service and 4,161 retail or office. And unfortunately, no matter how you do it, the, the chances are there'll be a tenant that needs a little more square footage for their thing than, than is in the chart, but that, that's the way you could structure the chart, that's why I think it's important for us to, to see the bulk table proposed as well as, you know, the shared parking analysis based on it.
And then, Rick, with that time that we already established for the personal use in the other building, would that carry on, carry over to this?
Not necessarily, you have to decide what the impacts are, I mean, essentially, what you could do, if you believe that the impacts, parking, water, sewer, et cetera, are too much for all of that personal service, then you would try to somehow mitigate, even though it wouldn't be under seeker, you still have those, the right to try to deal with site plan and special permit issues, so you would try to mitigate that by saying that certain places could only be open in a certain period of time. Again, it, it's going to get very complicated if the more flexibility that you're giving in your approval, so if you're giving now personal service, could be the entirety of the building. That's what, how you have to look at it, and if that doesn't seem like it's going to work, you're going to have to put some mitigations in there, such as hours or um, days, limitations on, on some personal services. It's, it, it's going to get very complicated, um, because it's asking for the maximum flexibility.
Can we, can we add a, a maximum amount that would be allowed for personal services, a maximum amount of square footage?
I, I don't think that you should do that in the abstract, right? Because the applicant has the right to go ahead and, and ask for whatever they think is going to be the likely tenants. But they have to live with the consequences of that flexibility. So if they wanted that flexible, you have to assume, I think, the worst case scenario, and then you give your approvals accordingly. So it may be that, um, you have to have other restrictions in the approval in order to keep it manageable, given, given the size of the parking lot and, and other issues.
And at what point?
Look ahead, Sandy.
How do we take into consideration the residential occupancy above? I mean, there's different personal services that might affect whether it's a, from, you know, if it's a hair salon, the smells from a hair salon to the noise of, you know, a different, a different use, um.
Body studio or.
Do we consider that at all, or no?
The, the residential uh, uses are almost the easiest to deal with, because they have a certain number of bedrooms, and that implies a certain number of parking spaces and cars, and it's kind of not, not going to change over time, really.
I think what Sandy's asking is how the personal service would.
Impact the quality of the tenants above.
Well, I think that any, anyone, if you live above a store, um, you could have problems with whatever it is. Uh, my son lives above a subway, and it smells like those funny rolls they have, but the, the thing is, 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 um, yeah, I mean, uh, uh, unless it's a, unless it's a bank, it's, you know, there could be potential for problems, I don't know that you can anticipate that, uh, too many, too many things. I would be, I would base this more on the capacity of the site, rather than getting involved in, in, in speculating on sort of the, 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 some of these annoyance issues, because they are code issues. Uh, creation of, of smells that are nuisance would be a code issue. And that could happen if it's a, uh, I worked in a community where there was a coffee roaster, and that, that was a problem for people, you know, as, as.
Sandy, I think the, the issue is, is that this has been approved for mixed use, who's anticipated that it'd be mixed use. Um, and you have.
Right.
You could have retail uses that are very noisy, you could have a appliance store that has TVs blaring all the time. Um, so I, I think that it's not really within your role to go ahead and try to protect the tenants, if
Okay.
they end up having, uh, poor choices of that mix between noisy or odorous tenants below, then they may lose tenants above, or it may reduce the rent that they can get for it, I, I think you just leave that to the marketplace.
Okay.
No, I mean, we, I don't think we need to protect the, the residents above, but I think we need to protect the overall village where we're looking at a shared parking analysis that.
Absolutely with the parking.
That already doesn't jive with what real world is, so, yeah.
Yeah, I concur with that.
So how do we pick what a worse use is? I mean, uh, a dance studio is going to potentially be bigger than a barber shop. Or unless you have a 7,000 square foot barber shop, that's, I mean, you got you got 60 barber chairs in there, I guess it's like military indoctrination day, but.
I mean, you can have, you can require the applicant, right, there's a, a good number of actually noted personal service uses, the ones that Natalie rattled off. And you could ask, since none of them are being eliminated, or if they are, then you can eliminate them, but then analyze it as for each individual one.
Um, I have a question for Mr. Esposito.
Yes.
The, on the plans, those first floor units in the main building, each one is shown as a certain size. Do you anticipate as you lease the, the, the first floor of the main building, that you'll be adjusting the size of units? Or you'll be further splitting them? Or is, are, are each of the units downstairs fixed, and you'll rent those out as they're built now?
No, they're, the sky's the limit with, with regards to the 7,100 square feet. Uh, a portion of that was designated for restaurant, uh, and then the balance was for retail and office, the market is going to determine where those, the partition walls are going to go, whether you need a 4,000 square feet or 2,000 square feet. You know, it, we, the, the goal here is to provide a building that has flexibility to meet the market demands. And, you know, that's what we're trying to do here. And, and our request is extremely consistent with the purpose of the Hamlet District, which is to provide, you know, mixed use of retail and, and commercial. Or I'm sorry, residential and commercial, that's what we're proposing. Uh, and, and in that purpose, they use the word service and they use the word mix. And we're just trying to keep it flexible, uh, to hopefully make what we think a beautiful building successful. Uh, and that's what we're trying to do.
Well, I did have a planning professor who said that congestion is a symptom of a successful place. And that if you want to have a successful place, whether it's at the center of a village, city, Hamlet, whatever, if it's a little congested, that means that things are going well there. Um, so there's, there's some, some tolerance of congestion is necessary in a, in a downtown Hamlet.
In a pedestrian-oriented area, and I agree with your professor.
Well, I'm glad, I'm, I'm glad your professor doesn't live here.
They probably never serve on a planning board.
You, you don't live here, you don't drive through, you don't deal, you don't listen to the residents that live next to it, so.
What it's worth.
I had a parent that said, blood goes round and round, air goes in and out, any deviation of that is a bad thing, so I mean, there's all sorts of acronyms out there that we could, we could spit out. Um, so then I guess it's going to be what, a shared parking analysis based on all the uses that Natalie so gracefully listed in her memo?
I think what it'll be is trying to identify, uh, which uses would be at the same time, when those peak hours and peak operating times would be, and then providing that analysis, and it could be of, it could be multiple analysis, it could be three, you know, showing all retail, all personal service, or a mix of the two. Um, and then I certainly think that Phil Greeley is going to be able to sort of steer that analysis and what would be the most appropriate as far as, you know, what those worst case scenarios would be, so. Um, I think that's probably how it needs to kind of proceed now, if you agree.
That we need to ask Phil for his opinion before we have the analysis done, or?
No, I think that, I, unless, Steve, do you disagree that, like, there's some direction here as far as, uh, you know, providing a, an alternatives and the analysis to demonstrate that worst case scenario?
Yeah, our original, yeah, our original analysis looked at weekday and weekends, because they're given the mixed use, you know, offices don't typically peak during Saturday and Sunday, they peak through Monday through Friday. Uh, retail, you know, may have a little bit different, they have a little bit different daily hours, and maybe some, depending on the use, may peak a little in the weekend versus the weekday. Uh, service, it, again, it depends on the service, uh, you know, service. Service, it again, it depends on the service, you know, service use may peak weekday, may peak weekend. Listen, we have a number of spaces that are onsite, you know, there are three offsite spaces adjacent to the bank, and then there's a municipal parking lot just down the street. You know, we have a number, we can back into it and look at the worst case scenario. Likely will be limiting the numbers, this maximum square foot for personal, personal service. And the balance will be office and retail.
I was involved with this application, I think it was up in New Pauls. That was a mixed use residential upstairs, a few few floors of it, and the first floor was all retail, personal service, restaurant type of use. And the way they dealt with it was to allocate a certain percentage or a certain square footage for each of those uses. And that way within, when they were satisfied with that, that way gave the flexibility that within those limitations, you could have any type of retail for so many square feet, any type of personal service for so many square feet, so in a restaurant used for so many square feet. And then everybody lived under that sort of rubric.
So it ca- it cannot be quote unquote approved other than X amount of square footage towards personal services, restaurant, office.
Yeah, and that that is different from what what Steve initially proposed.
He wants it all available.
Which is saying, here's, here's my block of seven thousand square feet. I want it.
And I just say the reason why we asked for that is because it's consistent with your code. I mean, your code has, you know, your square, your parking is based on square footage in the commercial uses, whether it's whatever you want to call it, commercial, whether it's retail, office or personal service. And the other component of it, which is the residential is based on the number better. So, you know, your code provides for that. We want to apply the code.
And I hear what you're saying, Steve, but you know that the board already granted a waiver for parking what was required based on your shared parking analysis, which is why this changes, you know, the use and what what would be required and what should be available for peak times.
Natalie?
Yes.
I have a question. Why was personal services left out in the first place? Was that the applicant's request or was the the boards? I don't recall really why that was left out originally.
I think it just comes down to what the applicant requested originally. It was just simply retail, office, restaurant. And then they came back for the TD Bank switch from retail office to personal service. So that was at the applicant's discretion.
I think it's always going to be the case that if the board has very specific requirements, the applicant's always going to be coming back because life won't fit those, but you know, but if you're more flexible, then the applicant won't have to come back. So, but I I'm sure no matter what we decide now, something could happen a year or two from now where where this has to be revisited if if we get very defined on square footages. That's just the nature of of what's happening.
We already met or we already set a limitation on the on the restaurant usage, though, right? How much?
Three thousand sixteen hundred, I think, or?
Yeah, it's small.
Family restaurant fifteen something. I keep the font is so small, I'm having a hard time.
But yes, there's a small allocation for restaurant. And you know, basically what what Mr. Esposito is saying is that his unit sizes, he's he had the 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 partition walls are he he'll he'll move them one way or another, depending if customer wants more. You know, more space or less space. So not even the units, he's proposing flexible unit sizes. So we're not going to know even what the sizes of the units are.
All right. I think we've gone around in a circle a couple of times. I think it's the shared parking analysis based on worst case scenario, right, Natalie? Is what we're going to do? Is what we're, right, Rick? Because we're good with that?
Yes. And and he can come up with, you know, I think that Steve can come up with different scenarios as to how to break that up. And that will help you with the sort of worst case scenario, because if it it limits things to a certain square feet, a certain types of use, that makes it easier for you to analyze it and gives more flexibility. If you have to consider the worst case scenario of a of a certain type of use, it may give Steve actually less flexibility. So, you know, you try to leave as much as possible to the applicant to define their own application, and then you react to it. And here, the greater flexibility they want, the the greater limitations they may have on that flexibility.
And this will include the bank building as well, right?
I'm sorry, Steve, what did you say?
Yeah, so the analysis, the shared parking analysis that we're going to be redoing will include the the TD Bank. The whole site. All right, I got my marching orders.
All right, Steve, thank you very much.
Just wait for a second, Chris. You can go ahead. This is a type two action under Seeker because it's simply a changing use of a previously approved area. It does need a referral into GM two thirty nine M. And obviously, when it's ready, it'll require a public hearing.
All right, so I'll just make the motion to reaffirm SECA on this application. No, wait, sorry. Hold on.
I think they were an unlisted.
Yeah, sorry. I I I'll make a motion to amend this. Type two action on the secret. There we go. Second by Tommy, any questions? All in favor? And then Natalie will work with Maria for the two thirty nine M referral. Okay, thank you. That it, that's it, right, Ralph, for this?
Yes.
All right, thanks, Steve.
Thanks. Have a good night.
All right, last item on the agenda for this evening, Woodbury Commons Ralph Lauren Coffee Truck. Review and discuss proposed amended site plan, special permit for the relocation of Ralph's Coffee Kiosk and Interior renovation of Polo Ralph Lauren Retail Store for Associated Back of House to support said kiosk. Said property is located within Woodbury Common at two eighty three Red Apple Court in Central Valley and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, section two two five dash one dash seventy dot two. Good evening. Oh, I don't see a our normal would be a very commons crew, who's a?
You've got Bill Pender guest, as long as you can hear me.
Yep, we can hear you.
All right, and I'm John Villapiano is no longer with Simon. John Dionis is the developer now. And we also have on here Aaron Baumberg from Ralph Lauren.
Okay, well, good evening and welcome.
Good evening.
All right, so thousand foot view of what you're here for tonight?
What we're here for is originally the Ralph's Coffee Kiosk was approved for a location outside of the Polo store. In in developing the plan for it, there's an extensive sewer and water issue. That's a a large impact to the cost of providing the kiosk. So the thought is to move it temporarily for two years to the site near Levi's, which was a prior approved location for a kiosk. That currently has water, sewer, electric, has everything available. And also with this application is there's a back house area that they want to develop that will provide for refrigeration, food storage, cleanup, those kind of things for the kiosk. The map that's up on the screen is basically that route that goes from the existing store to the kiosk. It travels about eleven hundred feet, would be about four times a day. One is in the morning before anybody's in the center, one would be at night when it shut down and two during the day. Be all hand carts, no golf carts, no motorized vehicles. Similar to the carts that they use for picking up garbage and and things in the center now in size. And again, it would be during the day. Both sites have been approved in the past. The Polo site was approved in the front. The other one was approved during the kiosk programming. Both have had ARB, both have had review in terms of site plan. We've met with Gary Thomasberger and talked to him about this in terms of ESOs and there's no issues. And that's pretty much it. They want to locate to that pad site that was approved and actually put in the ground for a two-year period as a trial. And then if it's successful, they would move back to the other location and relinquish this spot.
I I have a question.
Sure.
In your materials, you know, it was unclear what was going to happen to the kiosk, to the coffee kiosk that we had approved right by the back of house site on the east entrance.
Right.
And now you're saying, okay, you're not going to put it there, but you want to put it by Levi's Niagara. Isn't there, you didn't provide a detail of of the Niagara area. Isn't there like a shaved ice vendor in that spot? Now at Niagara where you want to put the coffee truck or will they, will 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 the other vendors stay there as well?
The other vendor stays there. Again, they're more of a, they're not a kiosk, they're a vendor, a cart vendor that is that they have throughout the center. It's in a different location. We can provide a more detailed site plan. I know Natalie brought that up in her review. There actually was a foundation that was put in the ground from the prior approvals and we actually got a permit for the foundation. They never built the kiosk on the foundation. So this coffee kiosk will be placed in the same location that the kiosk was in and was approved and the foundation was prepared for. And it was basically left as a gravel surface because the, we relinquished that spot to take that GLA and put it to another kiosk. It we doubled in size. So everything is there. It's actually prepped for the kiosk and then the footprint fits within the footprint of the kiosk foundation that was placed. With that, there was a sewer line, a water line and electric that was stubbed to that location as well. But the the shaved ice vendor is a little more up the hill on the other side of the fountain that's there. This kiosk is a little closer to the road. But again, it was the exact site that that we prepared and and built the foundation for.
I guess the the submission was a little confusing in that you provided like a kiosk, prior approval of kiosk arrangements with dots of different colors. It didn't show the approved site of the coffee truck kiosk that that you got recently and and nothing, nothing mentioned that. So I think that that it would be helpful to 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 show both approvals, both this one you're asking for or or the the previous approval of the coffee truck on the east courtyard of Ralph Lauren, as well as this proposed Niagara site, you know, and 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 include that. But thank you.
We can do that. And and the map actually showed this, this site, it had was on the original map. The only thing we haven't done, and Natalie did ask for an updated plan that we can provide her for the approved kiosk locations. Again, if this is granted for this location, the one in front of Polo, while we don't want to give it back, it will not be used for any other purpose other than Ralph's Coffee if we move it back. But Natalie did ask for a plan and also she asked for a plan to update. We had converted one of the original info booth kiosks to a retail retail kiosk. So we're going to put that on the drawing as well and we'll update the overall kiosk plan when when we get through with this.
You want to, Jonathan, you just want to finish up on your memo while you're?
Or you should have a memo from NPV on April thirtieth. The, basically, we we our comment one is we'd like a site plan of sixteenth inch equals a foot of the area of the Niagara kiosk location that shows the furniture, the sculpture, the the planters and so forth, because right now, this is the only site plan view we have that you have up on the screen. And the the I already mentioned that the food trust truck kiosk approved in September twenty twenty was not included in the overall chaos plan. Will refer, we will defer to the building inspector's determination that you're okay with the gross leasable area. And Natalie sent around a revised gross leasable area tally. And I did not get involved in reviewing that. I did notice that you submitted a variety of prior approvals and resolutions that in May thirtieth of twenty eighteen, in the fifth amendment to your site plan, I read that it includes the forfeit of a kiosk in Niagara Court. So, which appears to be this K eight location. So you know, I think we just need to 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 for you guys to review the history of the different amendments and and clear some of these issues up about what which approvals are you abandoning and which are new? And how does this all add up to the overall picture? And those, that's really, those are really my only only questions. Thank you.
It is the same coffee truck, right? Just moved to a different spot?
It it the the intent is to take the exact same coffee kiosk and move it to a location that had prior approval. We did abandon the GLA component of that approval, but not the location. So the location still existed. It's just we abandoned the GLA that was associated with that kiosk. We moved it to another kiosk that was in the Saratoga area. We had taken, the typical kiosk was twelve by eighteen. We built a kiosk that was twenty four by eighteen instead. So we basically abandoned the GLA component, moved it over. The site remained the same. And all the amenities around the site have remained exactly the same, the fountain, the seating, the play area, the sculpture, all that stuff is is exactly as was approved during that approval. So I understand the confusion and we can update the map. That's easy enough to do. But hopefully that clears up the the issue that is exactly the same kiosk that was approved to be in front of Polo in the courtyard. It's just being placed in a location that had a prior approval.
But let me just clarify that because it's very important. My understanding, and I believe it's in one of these resolutions, you didn't just forfeit GLA, you forfeited that kiosk. Which will we forfeit the approval for it?
We 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 basically forfeited the GLA. The location, again, if we forfeited the location, I it's probably semantics at this point, but it's we forfeited the use of the GLA that was associated with that kiosk. The the location didn't didn't go away, it's still there. And it was a prior.
It's not an approved location.
Well, it was a prior.
Number of kiosk, last one that was approved, said that you were forfeiting that and now adding another kiosk. So that I just, I don't see that this is an approved location at all. It was a previously approved but abandoned location.
Michael, you want to call that, yes, we abandoned the prior approval of that of that GLA and that location, I guess. But again, it was a prior approved location.
Really irrelevant if it if you abandoned it.
Hold on, everybody, hold on. One at a time. Sorry, we're all getting a little carried away, right? All right, Ricky, I, I know you're, are you, I know you're trying to make a point.
Well, the point is.
Why don't you finish up on yours, then we'll go to Natalie and let her?
Okay. My point is that it's now clear that they don't want to abandon the current kiosk location of where the Ralph truck was destined to go, but didn't go. And using that same kiosk and go to this other location, which is fine. But this other location now has to be approved by the board because that prior approval is meaningless because it was abandoned. And so this board has to go ahead and think now based upon it. It may be a very easy analysis, but I still think you need to approve this other, this proposed location as a new location. And then there may be GLA and, and number of kiosks that have to fall as a result of that. But I think we have to call it correctly. And this is just going to a new location that had previously been approved, but isn't presently approved. That's all.
Can I ask something? That the location that they want to go into now was prior, was not abandoned, if you don't want to use that term, but they gave that up because of GLA, correct?
I think they just gave it up.
They gave it up and they moved that GLA to another spot.
And now they want to put a kiosk there and increase the GLA again.
All right, hold on, let, let Natalie.
Okay.
Let Natalie weigh in here because she's done a lot of research here lately.
I know, my memo had a big background for you guys. So yeah, so to everybody's point, the location at the Niagara kiosk was abandoned in 2018. And it was the location and the GLA was allocated to doubling the Saratoga kiosk, if I'm not mistaken. The, but to Bill's point is the kiosk location at Niagara is retrofit to house a kiosk. It has the water and sewer connections. It has even, I think, the outline of the area for the building footprint. So reinstating that location doesn't necessarily change the GLA either because the coffee truck also was approved for 149 square feet of GLA or 194, I'm sorry. So when we think about this, I think the way the approval is set up now is that you have authorized 10 operational kiosks and that includes the coffee truck location and the information booth and the eight previous, or eight locations previously. But you also had five alternate kiosk locations. So technically, and I did incorrectly list 15 in our memo, you have 14 potential locations for kiosks. So I think the way, or in my mind, the way this would work or, or an approval for this would work is that all the operational kiosks have to be within the approved GLA. So I don't remember exactly what that was. I think it was 2,196 or something. And I could double check that for you, but it would basically be, so, so if they operated this kiosk location, which does have to be reinstated as part of this approval because it was formerly abandoned, it would only be allowed to be the, the coffee truck. The coffee truck couldn't be in front of the Polo Ralph Lauren site. So I think that's kind of how this would work. But if there's any questions about that, I'd be happy to help answer it. The other things that I wanted you guys to consider is also could the coffee truck then function anywhere on the site? So you originally looked at it for that specific location. The ARB was considered in conjunction with Ralph Lauren. The back of house operations support the coffee truck. Moving this to the Niagara location requires the transport back and forth of products up to four times a day, as Bill had already said. I think he also said that that was going to be by a push cart. So people would be coming back and forth transporting, I assume hot beverages or, or, or meals. And then also could another kiosk be located in the approved coffee truck location? And I think as part of your prior approval for the coffee truck, maybe that wasn't the intention. So I think if this moves to an approval, like all of that needs to be really clear in the resolution. The other one I wanted to act or ask about, again, so about the GLA reinstating the prior Niagara site wouldn't necessarily impact GLA as long as the number of operating kiosks were within the approved number. And then again, so the, the kiosk location that they're proposing the coffee truck be located at now already has those water, sewer and power utility connections. So we think that there would be minimal disturbance to the site to construct the coffee truck in this location. But that's something that Bill will confirm on part, as part of his site plan. And then similar to Jonathan's request, we had asked for that site plan that shows the seating areas and pedestrian pathways around this location.
And then didn't, aren't we going to need the ESO turning pass too?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Don't we typically ask for the ESO, the pass too?
Yes, and I think they did submit that plan, if I'm not mistaken. And I think to, just to another point about this having been looked at previously, this is out of the way of the ESO paths, but if, if not everybody received that plan, let me know because I think I did get it with our submission. But what, what does happen is that, that traffic back and forth between the back of house and the, um, this location, I think it does cross an ESO path, if I'm not mistaken.
The, yeah, would because the, the roads are, are part of the ESO path. So we would cross one of the roads at the intersection where the crosswalk is.
Right.
I have a question.
Who was that?
Jonathan?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
In the presentation, you said that you would bring the coffee truck to the Niagara kiosk spot for two years?
Correct.
Then you would bring that, that truck two years from now back to the east entrance of Ralph Lauren. Then what would happen at the spot vacated at Niagara kiosk? That's now next to Levi's with a square that's empty. Then what would you put there? In other words, would, would the, if the traffic truck goes back, then only, in only two years, there'd be another kiosk?
But.
Only if, only if approved, we could put another kiosk there because if we are not within the approval of GLA for kiosk at the time, we couldn't put another kiosk back there.
Yeah, I, they would have to come back, Rick, wouldn't they have to, we would only be approving of, of the coffee cart as it's in, in this spot, right? So wouldn't it, isn't it as simple as taking away the approval from the previous spot, knowing and avoiding that and then reapproving this spot just for the coffee cart and the coffee cart only?
But they don't want to do that.
Yeah.
I understand what they, what, what they want to do, what this board is going to do could potentially do different things.
That's one way to deal with it, Chris. Another way to deal with it is to try to fashion some kind of resolution that gives, they would go ahead and move the new location, have that for two years, during which time they could not use the prior one. And after two years, the approvals could swap back to the other. Another way to do it. What you don't want is to have two, these two approved at the same time.
Right. So any approval would negate, would have to have a condition that negates the other approval.
The ability to use a kiosk at that approval. That's correct.
Sorry, my computer froze for a second. And it just did it again.